The special meeting of U.S.A.R. City Council for August the 2nd, 2017 is called to order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
McKeever.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
O'Rourke.
Here.
Pfeiffer.
Here.
The reason this is a special meeting last night was National Night Out and we moved the council meeting so that anybody that wanted to could attend and I think it was very well attended. It was actually a beautiful evening. A lot of people were at different parties in town. I think there were 15 went there this time.
15.
15 of them.
You made 12 of them. You made 11 by the way.
I know. You can only eat so much water now.
And hot dogs.
And hot dogs and yeah, everything else was out there. It was a really nice evening. Before you, you have the minutes from the July the 18th, 2017 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. McKeever to accept the minutes from the July 18th, 2017 regular meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. You also have the minutes from the July 20th, 2017 special meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
Motion by the Sack, second by Mr. Pfeiffer. All those in favor of accepting the July the 20th, 2017 special meeting minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. And finally, you have the July the 24th minutes from the public hearing. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
Move.
Second. Motion by Mr. O'Rourke, second by Mr. Wireball to accept the July the 24th public hearing minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. This is where we break permission for visitors to speak. This evening we have Don Sheer with the Disabled American Veterans. Don, if you'd step to the podium, please. We always look forward to seeing you every year out there.
I got about three things tonight.
Okay.
First, I'd like to thank the mayor and his crews for getting the sidewalk fixed up on my house. It had fallen in when the storm sewer gave way and now it's handicapped accessible for the people in the area. We thank you and your crews for doing a great job. I'm Don Sheer, 1590 Rosedale Avenue, and I'm secretary of the Disabled American Veterans and I'm also secretary treasurer for the Crawford County Veterans Hall of Fame. How many of you been up to see what we're doing up at courthouse? We will be putting in our final one. The one that we dropped about two months ago and broke. We are putting in tomorrow weather permitting. That will get the first phase of that done and then within a week we should be started with the walkway going north to the next larger sidewalk coming out from the courthouse and we're gonna use that to honor all the veterans that died while they were in the service. We have like 450 names we found so far from the Civil War through the last ones and we're still gonna be selling papers forever probably, but right now there's probably a three-month lag from getting the order in, getting the granite, and then getting it here and getting it initialed. So if you want it in by Veterans Day, you should be getting your order into us pretty quick. We have like 85 that are being delivered, 15 to this month and none of them being engraved and we'll get them put in, but with the cost, what it costs to put them in, we have to do at least 10 or 15 to make it economically feasible for us. We just can't send a crew up to do one, you know, it just won't pay. But we've got about 140,000 in it, another 40, 50 second. Doc's up there smiling. He was with the Telegraph one when we started and we were talking 35,000, 40,000 and this is what it's turned into, but I think, I think the community and the county will enjoy it. And we're going to divide the sections up. I went up to the courthouse to the Veterans Service Office and I asked for the dates of when the different services were formed. I knew what the Marine Corps was because I'm a son of a Marine, so you'd learn that real quick. But kinda surprised me. I thought we'd been the Army, Navy, Marine Corps. They came up and they gave me the list and it was National Corps. And I said, whoa, and it was 1631, 140-some years before the rest of them were formed. So that's kinda neat. And then I looked down and it had Navy and after the Revolutionary War, Congress didn't wait with the Navy. And then they found out the Marines needed somebody to take them wherever they had to go, so they reinstated the Navy and we've been stuck with them ever since. We're gonna have 20 by 20 papers for all of them and my boss, Chuckie Christman, said, well, you know, yesterday he called me, he says, what about the Merchant Marines? So we're gonna get a 20 by 20 for the Merchant Marines to honor them too. U.S.A.R.'s fire department called us up and we're making up 20 by 20 for them. And then what they're gonna do is buy four by eight papers to honor all the firemen in the past that have served in the service, which is the vast majority of them, and they'll put those around the 20 by 20 paper. And they were saying that they were gonna kinda elbow the S.A.R.'s police department and Galleon Police and Fire Department. So that works out, that's great. If not, you know, we'll get there one way or the other. And we are, we have our people put in for the Hall of Fame for the November on Veterans Day. And that'll be at 7 o'clock at the S.A.R.'s High School. And we may have a couple, we may have, I can't say, we may have a couple of ladies going in this year, which is, we've been trying to get for a long time because for 10 years, all we had is men. And the ladies did a lot for us during the wars. My other one is VAB, forgive me not, because this is our fundraiser that we do every year. Today, I spent my day running up and down Route 4. I've got about 20 of these cans put out in different businesses. They'll be out for two months. So if you have a little bit of change, drop it in. It all adds up. And August 4th and 5th, we will be at Walmart in the morning and on Friday, we'll be out in the evening. And then August 11th and 12th, we'll be doing downtown U.S.A.R. It'll be Carlys, the post office, True Value, and Proverbs, and that'll be in the morning. So we appreciate any help the community can do. They never let us down. And each year we seem to be better and better and just enables us to help veterans here in the county out there. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Don. Next on our agenda, we have Chief Cappi, who's going to address us about Operation Hope.
Yes.
Chief, good to have you here this evening. How many parties did you get to last night?
Thank you, Madam President. I attended, I believe, nine parties.
Nine?
Out of the 15. And want to say thank you to the city council and mayor and all the officials, fire department, EMS, guardian angels. I lost track of all the different people that spent time on the, you know, on the reunions to get to all the parties. It was very important for the people to put the parties on. And thank you very much to the people that organized the parties. There were some really different things this year. We saw cloggers, we saw circus clowns. What did you see that was different?
I missed clowns.
No, you didn't.
But it was a great event. It's a unified force in the city and National Night Out began in 1984. That was kind of how many years? A long time ago. And that was nationwide, National Night Out with police and the public partnering against crime to send a message to criminals out there that the majority of people are law-abiding and are not afraid to take back their streets. You hear that a lot about Take Back in Town. Galleon just had a rally called Take Back Their City, something like that. And that's what, I'm gonna hand this out to everybody. It's called Unity in the Community. So if you bear with me. Hand it out to everybody. I'll try to give you a little background. I'll start with, I'll start with an image. There's, in the media right now, a sculpture in Cleveland on the public square. It's a pill bottle, a typical prescription pill bottle, with the silhouette image of people inside the bottle to signify being trapped in addiction. And we just had Hope Over Heroin in U.S.A.R. a month ago. It was a tremendous event. There were 11 people that found their way to rehabilitation and more than 70 people baptized over the course of those two days. And many people trapped in addiction will cite their faith or finding faith as the one true salvation that helps them get out of that symbolic being trapped in addiction. There's 200,000 addicted people in the state of Ohio and it's not just heroin. Actually, to have Hope Over Heroin is a little bit after the trend because now we're talking about fentanyl, carfentanil, gray death. There's all kinds of concoctions out there. And when I say 200,000 people addicted to opiates or addicted in some form, that's a general statement across the state of Ohio. And there's theories that Ohio leads the nation, that we're the ground zero of this pandemic. Now, if we go back to 2010, as we're around number, Together We Hurt, Together We Heal, is a group of people here in our community that recognized the problem early on and that doing nothing is not an option. That rang out and it actually brings out across the state now. And to give you a little background, a week ago Saturday, I attended a conference called Police Fighting Addiction. And Police Fighting Addiction is a gathering of law enforcement agencies and people that are in addiction or in recovery together, meeting, and we met at Norton High School. Norton is a city in Summit County, much like U.S.A.R., 12,000 population, police department same size as ours. And it was, the very first thing that struck me when I arrived in the high school commons was somebody approached me and asked, well, what had happened in Crawford County? Because they knew Crawford County's position in the state was in the top 10 amongst counties for overdose incidents going back about seven years. And now we're in the bottom 10. And it's because of Together We Hurt, Together We Heal, it's because of Alpha 12 Step, it's because of Mary Haven, it's because we all as a community started marching back then and getting together and saying, doing nothing was not an option. And Summit County now is the epicenter. They have, they have mobile morgues in Stark and Summit County. They can't keep up with all the overdose fatalities. You know, knock on the podium, oh, we haven't had a spike in overdoses here. We still have none. And, but it's because of the hard work that's been going on by the churches and by the rehabilitation resources, everyone in the rehabilitation field, social services, standing together and not ignoring the problem. Okay? And just another kind of, look at Summit County, look at Norton, look at U.S.A.R. and the police chiefs stood up and talked about the problem. It was like we were playing back tapes from Crawford County. The police chief said, please, everybody, work together because we can't arrest our way out of this problem. We say that till we're blue in the face. No pun intended, but that's, that's the drama of everything. We keep going on overdose calls. We use naloxone. Naloxone is now controversial, but all it is is restoring breathing. It's really beyond the heroin, the carfentanil. There's a police officer in Gloucester, he had to be revived with naloxone. A K-9 dog had to be revived. So it's more than just the addict, it's the wellness of the whole community. There was an audience, 500 people in the gym, and talking about addiction. They were all people that had been there, done that, all raised their hands. They were recovery addicts. And the reason they're still alive and helping others is because of programs like Operation Hope, the Police-Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative. There were police officers that had revived some of the people in the audience multiple times. And they're all part of resources. I came back from that conference with more than additional 20 places that if somebody comes to our department for help, that we can pick the phone up and find a bed for those people. Because these are people that are living it every day in recovery and want to help people in our community. We had, we're not one year into it, but in Operation Hope, it's not what we do as a police department. I just stay out of the way, really. The volunteers do it. People, and I want to get this out to the public more now. We didn't know if we'd be overwhelmed because the police department, individual officers couldn't do what the volunteers do. And that's just spend hour after hour with somebody or calling them because they get cold feet and don't go that day to rehabilitation. But we've had more and more people in our community go to rehabilitation, which I don't think the public knows yet. And that has definitely helped keep the overdose statistics down here in Crawford County. So that's the, that's the good news from Operation Hope. And it's the good news from Hope Over Heroin. It's the good news from the churches that have meetings. I know church tonight on Wednesday, because it's Wednesday, not Tuesday, but for example, Victory in Truth has a meeting tonight. One of our Operation Hope volunteers is there, helping support other people. We have 13 in the program that are volunteers that have driven people, driven people to the airport, driven people to Toledo and had to drive them back because they didn't, they didn't want to stay. But they're willing to do that, to put in the time, put in the effort. And we're gonna follow up ahead of the Community Care March, which will happen, what day? You don't remember?
So first Saturday in November, what do you think that is?
So the first Saturday in November, we're having the Community Care March. But it takes a constant effort to say, hey, we have great news, but we have to stay with it, keep the momentum up, and I'll turn to unity in the community. One of the organizations that has helped place people in our community is from the Journey Life Center in Mansfield, Springfield 39, and it's called Project One Recovery Road. And I'll give you a little example in detail. We have a pregnant woman, excuse me, it wasn't that case. It was a woman and an eight-year-old child. It's hard enough to find a bed for an individual adult, but a woman with an eight-year-old child, we had, we took her to the domestic violence shelter in Marion. She needed to be protected from a violent significant other. And we called Project One for help. There was a Facebook message put out there and within an hour, we had 13 different options for that lady and her eight-year-old to travel to. She's doing very well at a program as we speak right now. That was three months ago. So that's the kind of power there is in networking. And unity in the community is part of that networking. It's gonna be an event with more resources available on the square. It's not gonna detour traffic. It's like a, it's like what we had last night with block parties. It is blocking off the southeast corner of the square. There'll be a stage for speakers and there'll be resource tables. There'll be an area for children to play while the adults can talk to people in social services to get help. And hopefully we'll have some success like we did November 12th with the Grace Program when we had more than 25 that went to get help. And I know it's over 50% success rate from that event alone. And we'll hope for more and more of that on September 16th, the day the water plant opens. But it'll be ongoing from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on the square. And we're gonna set up at noon and of course, welcome everyone during the day to stop in and see what's going on. So unity in the community, you have it in front of you there. Project One, Operation Hope. And Santana Stamper is part of Operation Hope. She was gonna speak tonight, wasn't able to attend, but she's also part of Project One. And that's, that's the power of networking right there. She's in our community, but part of a program in Mansfield. And we're working on expanding Operation Hope. Mansfield doesn't have a police department program, but what they do there, they have an opiate response team. When they have an overdose, they have laypeople that will go with a police officer to the site where there was an overdose and try to reach out to the people. And we're going to try to do that in Operation Hope rather than waiting for people to come to us all the time. We'll do it both ways. So any questions about any of that?
That's a lot.
Yeah, that's what's going on. We still, and if you look real close at Operation Hope, we have no room in Crawford County for drug dealing. And we're still arresting people as aggressively as possible and make, don't get any kind of mixed message that we're not aggressively enforcing drug offenses that we continue to do as we speak. And even during National Night Out, we had, we had three officers. Couldn't go to parties because they had an arrest in 200 block of us in Mansfield. Remember that?
Okay. Any questions? Any particular questions for the chief this evening?
Thank you very much.
Very impressive. Thank you very much for coming and sharing this with us this evening.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening? No one? Communications and petitions?
We have one letter. This was addressed to the mayor and other elected officials, dated Monday, July 31. To the U.S.A.R. leaders on behalf of the Hyde family, thank you so much for participating yesterday in the memorial dedication of Larry Hyde Courts at Alamoa Park. It was an unbelievable event made possible by your efforts and participation. As we were leaving the park last night, there was a pickup game of basketball with people watching from the new benches. A truly moving and amazing sight to give back to the community in honor of my uncle Larry. He was looking down and smiling for sure. Thank you all again. Michael Hyde.
Thank you very much. We need a motion to accept and file the...
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by the Sack, to accept and file the letter from Michael Hyde. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Now, finish, please.
Public participation was not confirmed by the work league. Pass for motion to the Journey New York Labor Committee. Motion by the Sack, second by Mr. McKeever. The work league passed the motion at 7:00 p.m. Motion passed.
Thank you. Traffic Commission, we have no minutes this evening. Does anyone have questions for the mayor regarding traffic?
Well, Monica and I do. We have concerned citizens on Wallman Street, especially in the 900 block where my son's truck got hit in front of the...
Speed, right.
Due to...
Excessive speed.
Yes. They were, they were concerned or asking about street signs, as in children at play, additional speed limit signs, something to curtail the, especially where there's a lot of kids.
I'll, is it okay, mayor?
Sure. Please do.
I was there. I took all the pictures of the crash. That was a drugged driver. And actually, I'm gonna do a public awareness with the picture of your truck, son's truck in the air. The driver of the purple car was asleep at the wheel, is the most generous way I can describe it. She was drugged. So to take it a step further, it had nothing to do with speech. She had no control of the deadly weapon. She was not, she does not represent the average or common driver in this city because most, everybody, 99.9% do not do what was done that day. I hope everyone does respect the 25 mile per hour speed limit on all residential streets. It's, I think we all read that in the driver's ed, so we don't need to be reminded 25 miles per hour on all residential streets. One of the charges against the driver of the purple car should be, and I hope it sticks, is endangering children because in front of that house, there were several toddlers, one to three years old.
Who am I?
And they were standing a mere 15 feet from the truck and the truck saved them. The southbound purple car blasted a tree. It's a miracle it didn't overturn. The wheels, the tires blew out and it gouged the road from the east side all the way to the truck. Both rims flattened. Tires flattened and rims flattened. And...
O'Rourke recessed the finance committee at 7:00 p.m.
Any questions? Comments? Would you finish that? Before we do that, let's take the vote. All the entire council needs to vote on that post-audit meeting. All those in favor of not having the post-audit meeting with Perion Associates? Well, I need a motion first.
Who moved?
Okay, second? Who's that? Mr. McKeever. Motion by Mr. O'Rourke, second by Mr. McKeever to not ask for a post-audit meeting with Perion Associates. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Now, finish, please.
Public participation was not identified. O'Rourke passed the motion during the York Labor Committee. Motion by Ms. Sack, and second by Mr. McKeever. Motion at 7:00 p.m. Motion passed.
Thank you. Traffic Commission, we have no minutes this evening. Does anyone have questions for the mayor regarding traffic?
Well, Monica and I do. We have concerned citizens on Wallman Street, especially in the 900 block where my son's truck got hit in front of the...
Speed, right.
Due to...
Excessive speed.
Yes. They were concerned or asking about street signs, as in children at play, additional speed limit signs, something to curtail the... Especially where there's a lot of kids.
I'll... Is it okay, mayor?
Sure. Please do.
I was there. I took all the pictures of the crash. That was a drugged driver. And actually, I'm going to do a public awareness with a picture of your son's truck in the air. The driver of the purple car was asleep at the wheel, is the most generous way I could describe it. She was drugged. So, to take it a step further, it had nothing to do with speech. She had no control of the deadly weapon. She was not... She does not represent the average or common driver in this city because most, everybody, 99.9%, do not do what was done that day. I hope everyone does respect the 25 mile per hour speed limit on all residential streets. I think we all read that in the driver's ed, so we don't need to be reminded 25 miles per hour on all residential streets. One of the charges against the driver of the purple car should be, and I hope it sticks, is endangering children because in front of that house, there were several toddlers, one to three years old.
To remind.
And they were standing a mere 15 feet from the truck, and the truck saved them. The southbound purple car blasted a tree. It's a miracle it didn't overturn. The wheels, the tires blew out, and it gouged the road from the east side all the way to the truck. Both rims flattened. Tires flattened and rims flattened. And the momentum of the purple car was still fast enough. Estimated speed, probably 40 to 45. Drugged, and the foot probably stuck on the pedal because they heard the roar of the engine about 10, 5, 10 houses down north of them. And lifted the truck, what, about 3,000 pounds, lifted a foot or two off the ground, under the purple car, underwriting the truck. There appeared to be no injuries to the driver. She was laying across the seat. Some consciousness came back to her, and she started eating what was left of the cheeseburger she had in her hand that was on the dashboard. That, in a nutshell, is drugged driving. And if anyone takes controlled prescription pills, they should follow the directions on the label and not operate heavy machinery. That goes for all of us long-bodied drivers. That particular day, the controlled substance, the prescription pills, were being used in recreational fashion to get high, being abused. And I did not see if there's a felony indictment coming on there.
I haven't seen a report yet on the felony, so I'll have to wait.
So, I hope that explains it somewhat. I wrote part of the police report, so I can keep speaking on it, but yeah.
No, I... They appreciate that. They appreciated your quick response, but still, you know, there's something with all the kids, especially in South Wallman.
And to add a little backstory, Wyandotte County was chasing a fleeing felon driver...
That hit their back.
Earlier in the year at 9:45. At the end of that, if everyone remembers, there was a picture of a chase from Richland County that ended at the hospital. A similar kind of scene ended at the place setting back at 9:45, South Walnut. As the deputy and state patrol made the arrest there, we weren't even aware of Ucyrus. It had happened and ended before we even got... I don't think they even bothered calling and arresting them. And we heard the sirens and noticed that there was a problem down there. And because it happened rather quickly. It was a Saturday or Sunday morning. But what we got is the same house with that two type of drivers on both sides.
I did notice that the... On Spring Street, I believe it was, you have the thing out that tells you how fast you're going?
Yes.
You have it over on Spring Street?
And we have a list, actually, a list of speeding problems in town. Southern, Poplar, Walnut, Kayler, Tiffin Street, West End, East Irving. And we haven't been moving the traffic trailer around weekly. It's more like monthly, so I don't know that we'll get to each one before winter time. But it's a reminder and it raises the blood pressure of the driver. It doesn't keep stats for us. We are looking into some... And that trailer was from the Barrisca Foundation, the Barrisca Estate. Her estate purchased that back in the early 2000s. And the technology now actually has come down in price. And there's technology out there that would give us more statistical information, ballpark about $5,000 investment from the city if we wanted to get about two signs to help us monitor traffic without what happened at the legislature or Supreme Court this week saying that traffic enforcement remotely is, I guess, Law Director can speak to it. We don't do that Ucyrus, and I don't think we want to, but you could...
Yeah, they keep going back and forth on whether it's permitted or not. Right now, it's permitted.
But in the meantime, we want to just raise awareness. Remember driver's ed, 25 mile city streets unless it's a state route or posted otherwise. That's the rule of thumb, so. Any questions about that?
Mr. Moore?
All those streets you just mentioned, how many traffic tickets have been issued?
I can't give you an exact number, but we're writing traffic tickets all the time, so...
Mr. Law Director, come in. On those streets, I have no way to know. I don't track them by...
You can have all the speed trails you want. Enforcement is your answer. We're getting complaints, so I think it's up to you and the mayor to have your people out there.
I will say, I have noticed, especially my different hours I was working, I've seen your officers up and down Poplar and Oakwood. They come different ways trying to... I do see them.
And they do enforce it in a moving fashion. They don't have to be parked at moving range.
Right, right. They are driving and that's...
And because, as you offered, your driveway...
It's still available.
The... It's hard to explain, but the radar unit is a fixed mount in the car. It's only pointing out the front of the window, so they have to either parallel park or be on the move.
They can park right front of them.
We have acquired two new units called the Stalker. And it has a front... Like the state patrol, we never had a rear radar, but one of our night shift officers has the front rear radar now. He's doing that effectively. He likes having the rear antenna, so... Yeah, if you're speeding up behind Officer Wolf at night, he might just activate the rear antenna, I think, so...
I mean, still, do you think about children at play signs? I mean, I don't know what the cause of the law...
I defer to the law on that. I know when I... My kids were young and playing on Plum Street there. I came to the mayor and asked him, you know, if we put the children at play. And he said to me, "They don't do that." So, he doesn't do that because it's a liability issue for the city to put that up. Now, that's what I was told. I don't know, you know? I don't know if that's a possibility. I think with a case like... Typically, speeders tend to be young people, especially young men, but I'm not sure...
Not the ones I've seen.
I'm not sure they're going to be, you know, children at play. And you've got the whole issue of not just drug driving. You know, Bill brings up the point. I mean, it's... The distracted driving is a huge thing. I sat tonight and watched cars go by that were waiting for a red light. And about, you know, one out of maybe eight people, they're looking at their phone, you know? They may not be texting, but they're looking at their phone, checking Facebook or whatever. I don't know what they're doing. But that's an issue along with speeding. We've got some serious potential issues.
The biggest offense we have in the municipal court, traffic related, is the first degree misdemeanor driver who doesn't have a driver's license and has no entitlement to be under the first place. Some say one out of five drivers don't have a license or driver privileges. If Ucyrus is probably closer to one out of eight or nine.
Five or six a week at least.
Yes.
Really? Just a catch.
And a lot of times, a lot of times, the officer will stop somebody for speed, and if that's they find out no driving privilege, then that's what the charge is. So, we don't stack charges on tenants, so...
Can I just make a suggestion? Excuse me, Bill. Go ahead.
I referenced a sign there. I mean, I've been on this street 29 years, and people are honest with you. On the side of the streets you want to put it on, I don't think the number of cars that park there, I don't think it's going to be real visible. They're going to have a very much attention to anyway.
I'm just saying, if you put it on the side where there's no parking, at least something. Just as a suggestion, whatever you could do.
Madam President, can I make a suggestion? Why don't we continue this discussion at the traffic commission, you know? And invite the public and everyone to...
And do, yeah, the next week.
...be there. I think we could talk about some of these things, so maybe get a plan and, you know, go greater detail on it.
And offering one that West Mansfield Street, you know, Heartland and Ucyrus, it's 55 miles per hour on one side of the street and 25 on the other. And it's probably, I think we've talked about it, or it'd degrade if we could address that at the west end of Heartland, at 35 maybe? Some kind of a buffer from 55 to 25 because you get to DT control. In theory, it's supposed to go to 55 to 25. We had a problem like that in Kirsten Road a while back, and it was fixed, but yeah. That might make it to council.
Do we have a traffic commission scheduled yet or not?
We'll schedule it right now.
Okay.
How about Friday, August 25th at 10:00 a.m.?
Friday, August 25th? At 10:00 a.m.? Okay. Thank you. Other traffic questions, comments?
I have one, but I'll save it after Mayor Rees' report.
Probably the only thing that I would like to say about it is that since now I am in the middle of living in a construction zone, the... When the sign says the street's closed, the street's closed. I'm amazed the number of people that go through and think that there are big trucks, there's big machinery that's moving around down there, and they think that they can fit through it. And that's not a good thing to see because you're going to lose. Those things are a lot bigger than you are, right? A lot of them, yes. So, be aware of that. And I know be kind to your neighbors because you're... Everybody's trying to find a place to park. If you can't park at your home on Southern, you're parking somewhere else. Be kind to your neighbors and make sure you leave plenty of room for them. And don't think that everything can squeeze through a tiny little area. I saw a big truck that was hauling out the dirt backing down East Street today. And with cars parked and a sign and everything else, and I'm going, "Oh, I didn't mean to watch that." So, be aware of all that. It just takes a little bit of common sense, I think. Okay. I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
Hello.
Motion by Mr. O'Rourke, second by Mr. Trucca to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. We'll move on to the report of city officers. Mayor Rees, sir.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Well, you know, Sunday was a special day for us. I know we had to keep it quiet to make it a surprise to the Hyde family, but I hope you all checked your email. It's all that I sent an email announcing it late on Friday, so... We had a wonderful turnout, well over 100, 150 people there. Hyde family was thrilled and shocked. We were happy to dedicate our basketball court at Allmiller Park to Larry Hyde. Well, we knew Larry, longtime resident, supporter of athletics involved in many other things, including he sat in this room as a member of city council. They came from all parts of the country to their family reunion this year. And Michael, the nephew, who's another who wrote, reached out probably this spring, early spring, and was looking for a way that, you know, they could partner with the city to honor Larry. And I said, "I think we've got the perfect..." Courts were in need of some rehab at that time, and, you know, they agreed to the changes. And we had some nice amenities like benches, some trees, which is a wonderful display of... Maybe a chance to see it if you haven't seen it. It's really impressive, and it's probably... I don't see where there's a nicer outdoor court anywhere. And if you... The saying in the movie, I can't remember what the movie was, Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. I mean, if you fix it up, they will come. I mean, the first night there, we had 20 kids playing basketball, and it's been busy ever since then. It's really, really a nice... Nice thing for the city. We thank the Hyde family for partnering with us. And now we've got to turn our attention to tennis courts. They are in pathetic shape and getting worse. Hope to get it done as soon as possible, this year if we can. Same thing I expect to see if we start playing tennis again, if we don't have to worry about the Wimbledon effect of all the grass growing, so... We mentioned also National Night Out was a success. We hustled. We made quite a few. We made almost all of them. Everyone was very gracious and very complimentary of the city and how things looked. It was really nice to get out, you know? And just unfortunately, we just couldn't make all of them. Chief said it makes us closer as a community. So, thanks to the police department for heading that up. Flower Festival's just around the corner, and, I mean, they're working hard this year. Those guys, they've got new people, new blood. I like their idea for the lead float. They're going to have 50 years of mayors. Since it's probably its 50th anniversary, there's going to be either living mayors or family members on the floats every year. We've heard from all mayors and all, you know, relatives, and we're going to have... It'll be in there three nights. Very nice. Mike Juwine, our attorney general, will be coming on Saturday to be in for it. As Chief mentioned earlier, there's another large event on September 16th. That's the dedicated new water treatment plant. We're working on a punch-out list now. Things like just cleaning it up, little things that have to be tweaked. The outdoor landscaping will be going in soon. Grass, more grass, plowed, those types of things. Invitations have gone out. We've heard back from quite a few people. It's going to be a huge celebration. We're going to... The tentative plan right now is to start the tours at 10:00. And we'll have dedication at noon, in case anyone wonders. The Buckeyes will play on the 4th, so we've got plenty of time. Yes. And so, that's all I have for tonight except I have one referral. It's that I would like to refer the repair of the swimming pool, which we have a large crack in the swimming pool, to lands and buildings and finance.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the mayor?
Did you get investment on the crack?
We have one so far, but we're going to get others too. $85,000 was the first estimate, so...
Don't fall out of your chair.
I didn't hear that.
Any other questions?
Well, it's cheaper than it was, so it's still in pretty good shape except for the crack.
I have several.
Okay. Grats, some questions.
I got your email the other day on the council questions from... And the first one had to say to put the Beale Avenue railroad across from the river lighting and/or sidewalk for pedestrians. I wasn't just talking to railroad, I was talking to railroad out of the Beale Avenue.
To put a sidewalk the whole way, all the way out to Wedstone?
Beale.
Where do you want to start it? Oh, where it'd be all the way through Beale, okay. Well, we could look at that. I'm not sure. Are we allowed using immunity funds for cycle? Do you know what I'm just... Okay.
Item two. I've seen it all over town. The... Along the curves, grass and weeds are growing.
Yes, we have an issue there.
And they're either being sprayed, burned, or else they're going to break up the pavement.
Yes. Good point. Been talking about that. We've had some issues. We had two people off sick, and we've been a little shorthanded. It's going to be a ten to... We had a discussion on this last week, because I know what you started in the asphalt with the crabgrass, it's going to break up, so... Yeah, it's top priority, you know, right now. Top priority after mosquitoes, so...
Okay, regarding your notation on the weeds among the rocks at the reservoir?
Yes.
You said you're going to get the large ones out. Are you going to spray the rest?
I don't know what the past policy has been on, I'll find out. I don't know if it's a spray or if it's a chop. I don't know if there's, you know, if there are regulations on spraying that close to the water supply.
You might ask Jerry.
Yeah, I was talking with Jerry and Terry and see what they say.
Your notation about the Army Corps of Engineers doesn't want to worry about our trees in the river.
Right.
There's got to be some state agency or someone that will address that. I don't know if it's...
Well, I can check with...
National Resources, Department of Agriculture. But the ones I've seen, they're like trees have been harvested. They're cut off. There's no branches.
Yeah, we walked, Chief and I and John walked out to basically the reservoir last year. We noticed a fairly large street blocking, some issues.
They've been harvested somewhere, and they were just laying there in the water, but...
There's some issues there, and we have to address that. And the Army Corps, you know, said unless it's navigable for a submarine or something like that, they're not really...
Well, it might be navigable for a steamboat.
We could do a...
Not a real... We'll figure it out.
A river casino or something. Well, we're on it, though. Jeff does, is going to have a look at it, and we already told him about it. He's going to have a look when they're going to play him on it.
One other question from a citizen or citizens has to do with the First Friday signs.
Yes.
Their statement was that we have a beautiful square with flowers and trees and bushes, and they think the signs block them. And they do to some extent, but I don't know, somewhere around that next year when you put them out or not.
It was an issue last year. I mean, those two groups kind of butted heads a little bit.
A lot of them. I mean, they put a lot of work in those.
I mean, the First Friday people, you know, they put a lot of work into First Friday too. So, there's an issue. So there's an issue. Now, we can, you know, we can do something different next year. We could invest in some signs and take them across maybe Sudski Avenue or something and take them. I'd be in favor of that. I don't like the signs on the square either, but...
This year it does, so...
Yeah. So on Saturday, after First Friday, I'm the one that takes them out. And so, right away. And so I agree with you. I don't like them there at all, but they're, you know, out of respect to the people that run First Friday. Right now, it's all we have. It's the only option we have to let people know. But they'll be gone by Saturday. You come through there Saturday, they'll be gone. And I'll be storing them.
I would think, you know, temporary signs would be set out. You know, and I do think you have to have them set out for thirty days, well, ninety days or whatever.
We could, you know...
I mean, a week before, put it out, hey, or, you know, the Friday you're gonna want, hey, this Friday or, you know. Because it's like a billboard that you drive by. Once you see it the first three times, you quit looking at it anyhow, so. Nobody's looking at it.
Y'all make good points. I mean, it's nothing that we haven't discussed before, and I'm on your side on this, so. But, I mean, for the people that put a lot of work into this to make this thing apply, it's been a pretty successful promotion for the most part. Yeah, it had a little weather issue last time, but I think next year we need to tweak the sign. And so let your friends know that, you know, we're gonna work on it.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes. Mr. Ross?
Any more of a service director question, but you're not here. Some of the neighbors over in two hundred block of Woodmont.
Okay.
Church next to the elementary school tore that house down next to it. And the house is down. It's all replanted grass and everything. But the neighbors have told me that there's about twenty feet of sidewalk that's left all broken up. And there's a small section of our city curb that's broken up. Now, they should be made, the contractors should be made to repair that, I would think, you know, so.
You're talking about what? I'm not sure exactly what that is. You know what it is?
Yeah. I'll have a church.
I'll have Bud go over and take a look at it.
Yeah.
And the sidewalk is the property of the...
Church right next to the elementary road. And then they're... They had a house torn down. And, but like I say, there's about twenty, twenty-five feet of sidewalk that's left broken up. There's a small section of curb that's broken up. You know, the neighbors say, "Wait, you know, kids are gonna be going to school in about three weeks," you know, so.
Okay. We'll get through it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? I need a motion then to put the repair for the swimming pool into lands and buildings and finance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Trucca to put the repair of the swimming pool into lands and buildings and finance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Moving on to the service director. The service director's not with us this evening.
I have his report right here. Bid opening for the Border Patrol bid opening for the Oakwood East and Norah Waterline will be Friday, August fourth, two thousand seventeen at ten a.m. in council chambers. The fire department repair bid is out. Specs have been picked up and emailed out this week. This is the second week of advertising. Bidding on the chiller, the advertisement will go out once the legislation has been passed. We welcome Eric Clady, our new maintenance associate, who comes to us with lots of experience in HVAC and electricity, among other things. He's doing his own job. In three weeks now, he'll do a fantastic job. Airport grant has been accepted. All documents were signed and sent in with millipede, but it's approaching second phase. Start the week of August twenty-first, right after the Bratwurst Festival. The State Route ninety-eight project will be going to bid in the fall, probably in October, and work will begin in January. The budget meetings have been set. They're gonna begin this month, and we hope to be ready by the end of September meeting with finance committee. Heads up on the Labor Day garbage pickup. I know it's about a month out, but as usual, the Monday garbage will be picked up on Tuesday. And make sure you have your garbage out by seven a.m. as usual. Three referrals. OPWC for two thousand eighteen to service committee and finance committee. Another referral for park easement to public lands and building committee. And a referral, let's see. Is that right, Ron, that last one? Are we repeating that one, are we?
No. It's a...
It's a new resolution for the...
We're gonna...
So we're just gonna refer a new resolution for the WPCF loan agreement as an emergency to the finance committee.
Any questions about the service director's report? Okay. I need a motion to refer the OPWC for two thousand eighteen to the service committee and finance committees.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Wirebaugh, second by Mr. Sack to refer the OPWC for two eighteen, twenty eighteen, to service committee and finance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We also need to refer the park easement to public lands and buildings committee. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Ms. Sack, to put the park easement to public lands and buildings committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And finally, we need the Water Pollution Control Fund WPCF loan agreement. It is an emergency. We need it to go to finance committee, and the deadline is Friday. So the... What we're going to see is announcing a special council meeting Thursday, tomorrow evening. We've already announced it, correct? Sorry to get it sent out to the media. We're gonna have a special council meeting tomorrow evening after the committee meetings so we can meet the August fourth deadline for this. So I need a motion to put that into committee.
Committee. Second?
I'm sorry, who said yes? Mr. O'Rourke? And second was Mr. Piper? Motion by Mr. O'Rourke, second by Mr. Piper for the Water Pollution Control Fund loan agreement. All those to finance committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. That takes care of it, Mr.... Law Director. Mr. Ratliff?
Thank you, Madam President. No written report. We've finished on stats. July is a tax court-free month, so nothing there. Nothing to refer on all else. Except for the chief. He looks very questionable back there.
Can I pose a question?
Always.
I'm speaking on behalf of the board of Busiris Air and Heath Soccer. We were down at the park looking. Noticed the, it looks like the house on Clinton Street might be coming down.
The Whitewood?
Yes.
Yes.
What's the status of that?
Some of your officers, as well as the special response team, last week practiced in the house. So it may have suffered some slight damage. But it is slated for demolition. It is one of the first ones that are kind of on the mix for demolition. I think the contracts already been done on that.
Contracts have been signed.
Yeah. I think it's in the first five kind of group on those. And then Landbank controls that. And I believe Landbank, I can't speak specifically, but I believe Landbank has been in touch with Busiris Heath Soccer about giving them or allowing them access and control of that once it's back to grass.
We've had two board meetings recently in the summertime, and we were curious about that because of the possibility of having a pavilion added to the park in the near future, provided with a property, another property down there.
Yeah. And there's a little more land. I think we had... We talked at some point in time about the alleys and everything across the street. Maybe have better use some of that land. So, yeah, we could refer that to public lands and buildings if we wanted, kind of discuss that. I don't know if it's pretty tricky or not.
We do have, well, I'll ask Matt McCoy, the president of the soccer program at this particular time to, again, return to council. Or do you have a particular venue he should approach with ideas, big picture ideas about the park?
First, I need to give a thought to Gary with respect to Landbank and time out what their timetable is as far as how they're gonna deal with that house. And then, secondly, we can talk about, you know, long-term planning down there.
And you can come to council and give a presentation to us, yeah?
Okay.
We'd love to hear it.
I'll give you a quick update, if it's okay, about the August fifth, nine to eleven a.m. is one of the in-person signup times. Anyone interested in Busiris Heath Soccer is all online registration, but they'll get assistance nine to eleven on Saturday to do that. There's Wi-Fi at the park. And there's also Soccer Fest Tuesday, August fifteenth, six p.m. to eight p.m. That'll be the last day for registration, online or in person. Soccer Fest is a party in park with soccer and other events. And Busiris Soccer Club, the high school kids, there's not yet a high school program other than Gallion, but there's forty kids aged fifteen through eighteen that are out for soccer this fall at Busiris, and they're going to compete against other high schools. They will have an alumni game the night of Soccer Fest. And then September eleventh, Gallion High School is going to play the high school kids at Busiris at seven thirty. So mark your calendar for that. And anyone that needs assistance registering can see me at the police department during business hours. I'll help them. We have Wi-Fi. We can get on a tablet and help them do registration. And it's online at busirissoccer.com.
And it's kind of just for kids at Busiris. I mean, especially with the little kids. There's hundreds up down there sometimes. I don't know where they all come from. But they're from all over the place.
We have twenty-nine teams last spring. Hopefully about that same number. And over four hundred kids played in the spring. Just to give you an idea.
It's amazing. It's amazing.
All your references to the park mean the soccer park down on Lane Street, correct?
Harman Park.
Harman Park?
Lane Street Field, Harman Park. And, yeah, it was a great event last year when Gallion played at Busiris on the old football stadium. So, you know, it was pretty significant.
Some of them just play football. I'll be on football stadium. I'm not at home.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions regarding law director? Mr. Trucca?
What's the status of the property on East Warren Street, on the South Side Street where we had that recent fire?
Oh, there's three or four properties that were involved in the fire. One was mostly demolished by fire. The one beside it is being turned over to Landbank to be demolished. And as is what's left of the one that was the main fire property. The one to the east, I'm not sure what the status of that one was yet. The fire wasn't... It wasn't as involved in the fire. Just had some... It looks like just mixed and messed up. But the two that were severely damaged are both now or working away to Landbank to be fully demolished.
So as a city, do we have to put snowpads around that property? Right now, I went by there and it was just galloped. And all the tape has ripped off, off the trees. And I didn't know whether it was a liability issue for the city for kids getting in there and...
It should be a burden of the property owner to secure it and protect it and or their insurance agent. But once it becomes something that's part of the Landbank, our agreement with the Landbank is we would generally secure and mow and things like that. So we would probably take steps to protect it at that point. I'll take a look at that and see if I can maybe secure those.
Right now, right now, you can walk right into the property, walk into the basement and everything that's exposed. I was just curious too, is there any... The main court action or anything like that on some of the properties that have went through their due process on, on, you know, that being taken care of?
Yeah. Yeah, we've got a number that are in municipal court right now with criminal violations. We have a number more that we're trying to affect service on with those criminal offenses while the owners are outside of town. And we are... Our mow list has just skyrocketed. And to Mr. O'Rourke's question earlier about just, you know, the growth of the leases of its citywide, it's worse than since I've been here. It's kind of worse ever as far as I can imagine. And so our crews are just really overworked. So we're looking at some of the city hasn't done. It is provided for in our ordinances though is criminal charges for not mowing your yard. A lot of moves that have to be jumped through for that, certified mail notice and delay. But, you know, we have... I don't even know how many on the continuous mow list. I think it's been thirty or forty.
That is a lot.
It's, I mean, so it's getting out of hand. And it's a minor misdemeanor. It's punishable by up to a hundred fifty dollar fine, but up to a hundred fifty dollar fine every time we have to do it. And we're questioning how much more time and labor we're gonna put into this, but it's gotta come to it. And so that's on the repeat for social workers companies.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Moving on to the audit, Mr. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President. You have a statement of cash position and the revenue tallies and income tax comparisons. I have received several questions regarding revenue in the sewage disposal fund, which, you know, appears to be drastically low right now. But this is due to the bond anticipation note for Clinton Street that we're going to be applying for, and I will be referring that at a later time. I've talked to bond counsel about it. Right now, and that's five hundred thousand dollars that isn't showing anywhere in receipts except on reports right now. It's in the estimates. So since we haven't received that yet, that's what makes this look so low. We're waiting right now. I talked to the service director the other day about seeing if we can get a new updated breakdown of what the cost could be, since the last one we have is from two thousand fifteen. It's two years old, and we may need a new estimate on that so that we have a better idea when we go for this bond anticipation note of timeframes and that kind of thing. So there'll be more news on that later, but that's why that number looks so, so low. I do have some referrals. We're going to need appropriation in the derelict building liability fund. This was due to the fire on Warren Street. We have an insurance deposit for four thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents, so we need to get that appropriated. I will also have the numbers for the appropriations I referred earlier for telephone bills. I'll have that for the finance meeting tomorrow night. And also, we've received a bill for our annual pledge to the Crawford County Education and Economic Development Partnership. That's too much to say. But at any rate, the current agreement that we have says that it will expire at the end of calendar year 2016 unless a one-year extension is read to in writing by both parties. And we don't have that extension at this point, so I can't hit our pledge. So we need to refer this to the proper committee or person, the law director, I don't know. But anyway, we need to renew that.
Okay. So the question comes up is, do we need legislation to do this, or can the administration just sign the extension? Because we never did any legislation to begin with specifically for this, but it's been in the budget for the last two years.
Right. It's authorized in the budget.
Yes.
In the budget, the admission, the administration.
Yeah. So, but the agreement says that we need to do an extension. So do we need actual legislation to do that, or the administration can handle it?
The money's already appropriated, so.
Okay.
So the administration can...
That thought after we talked.
Right.
I was thinking, I thought that there was a discussion about this. So you'll need to work it out with them to sign this extension.
Someone needs to write up something.
Yeah.
We have a copy of the original-
We'll get a copy for you. Anything else for the, oh, we need to do these referrals for the auditor into finance committee for the derelict building liability fund, additional insurance deposit. I need a motion? Put that into, oh, wait, we might as well do them together. For finance committee, and we also have additional appropriations to cover telephone bills. Do I have a motion now?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Wirebaugh, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sack for the derelict building liability fund and the additional telephone bills to finance committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Police chief, does the chief have any words that he wants to share with us this evening?
I forgot to say one thing.
I knew you'd always forget one thing. Come on up and have a say.
The Browners Festival, I'll go back to the drug driving incident, and we'll be making a public note, so that picture's a great poster. Drive sober or get pulled over happens leading into Labor Day weekend and coincides with the beginning of the Browners Festival. So, I remind everyone to pay attention to, that goes for everybody, and I, you know, if you have a root canal and you do the pills, be careful, and you shouldn't be driving. Have a medical procedure, have a driver, things like that. Make sure that you're alert and able to handle the vehicle, and that goes without saying that drinking and driving is deadly combination. So, drive sober or get pulled over coincides with the beginning of the Browners Festival, runs through Labor Day weekend, and we'll be focusing on air driving. Also, Browners Festival time, we're gonna try a first-ever three versus three soccer tournament. Our park used to be rugged down there.
Oh.
During the Browners Festival, we're gonna add that. It's a fundraiser for Bucyrus Area Youth Soccer, so, for that.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I need a motion to accept the city officer's report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by McKeever, second by Ms. Sack, accept the city officer's reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have visitors in regarding reports of standing and of city officers. Does anyone want to address council this evening? None?
Madam President.
Oh, yes.
Did we miss the term?
No, we did not miss it, we skipped it. Okay, it's not available right now.
Thank you.
Okay? For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have two pieces of legislation, ordinance number thirty-seven, two thousand seventeen, amending and supplementing section nine fourteen point zero one entitled Extension Procedures of Chapter nine fourteen entitled New Construction and Size of Waterlines in Part Nine entitled Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordances of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio. That is referred back to finance. Resolution number two twenty-three, two thousand seventeen, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts, not to concede eighty-eight thousand dollars with the lowest investment or bidders for the replacement of the air conditioner at City Hall. Finally, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations, and declaring an emergency, and that goes to public lands and buildings.
Thank you. I need this, we need to accept this as the first reading?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. Truca, to accept this as the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We need to refer thirty-seven dash two thousand seventeen back to finance, resolution two twenty-three, two thousand seventeen, to public lands and buildings. This is the time where we have public participation. If any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. And anyone this evening? No one? Do we need a recess this evening? Nope. Okay. Committee reports on pending legislation. Finance committee?
Finance committee is favorable, ordinance thirty-seven dash two thousand seventeen water line extensions.
Okay, thank you. Public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings is favorable to resolution two two-three dash two thousand seventeen, the City Hall air conditioner.
Okay, I need a motion to accept these reports?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept the reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number thirty-seven dash two thousand seventeen, which are the water line extensions, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved.
Second?
McKeever?
Yes.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Awark?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Ordinance number thirty-seven, two thousand seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number thirty-seven dash two thousand seventeen?
So moved.
Second? Piper?
Yes.
Awark?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Awark?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-three, two thousand seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second?
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Awark?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-three, two thousand seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two twenty-three dash two thousand seventeen?
So moved. Second?
Awark?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Here.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-three, two thousand seventeen is duly adopted. Thank you. Does anyone have any old business they'd like to bring up at this time? None? Moving on to new and miscellaneous business. August the fourth, first Friday in downtown Bucyrus, honoring hometown heroes. Shine's Art Park ribbon cutting is at four thirty. Do you want to elaborate on that a little bit, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's gonna be, I guess, an unofficial opening of the park to the public. The park is not really done, we have more things that go in the park yet, but we wanted to get it open for this last first Friday. So, four thirty, if you would, are free, please join us for ribbon cutting. We're gonna have several artists in the park that night, so, should be a good event. And then, the plan is that it'll be that a dedication in either late September or early October, as soon as the wall designs finish, so, we'll keep it formed on that.
Okay, thank you very much. August the seventeenth through the nineteenth is the fiftieth annual Bucyrus Browners Festival. August the twenty-second is the first day of school for Bucyrus City Schools. And another reminder, September the sixteenth is the dedication of the new water treatment plant, beginning at ten a.m. Anyone else with any new or miscellaneous business to bring before council? Yes?
Joyce, what about the Together We Hurt, Together We Heal annual banquet, is that?
That will be August twenty-ninth.
Okay.
And it's in Gallion's.
And who can they contact?
For tickets, they can contact me, I guess.
Okay, in the auditor's office, okay.
Yeah.
And that's a fundraiser for-
It's a fundraiser for Together We Hurt, Together We Heal. We had our national night out party at our recovery house last night, and had a good turnout there. And we're working on moving forward to hopefully open our women's house after the first year. So, we have a property, it has been turned over to us, we're working on grants right now, and so, we're moving forward, so, everybody help, please.
Very good, thank you. It feels, it's just good to hear the news that there's always something new coming up that, doing what we can, okay? Anything else for new and new business? We're all here this evening. The joint regular committee meetings are tomorrow evening at six p.m. All referrals from this council meeting and any open project, list items, may be discussed during the committee meetings. Those for discussion tomorrow night are-
We have five referrals from tonight. The swimming pool repairs to public lands and buildings and finance from the administration. The OPWC grant for two thousand eighteen to service and finance from administration. The all-millipart easement to public lands and buildings from administration. The WPCF loan application to finance from the administration, and various appropriations that is also to finance from the auditor. Also, for tomorrow evening, we have three things that are already in committee on the agenda. The status of the fines reservoir, that's in public lands and buildings. The ambulance contract, that's in health and safety, and the use of the public right-of-way in the downtown business district for retail and not call and dining sales, that's in plotting committee.
Okay, thank you. The next WPCO radio program is Wednesday, August the ninth. John Rostache will be, I think he's already recorded it, but it will be on Wednesday, August the ninth, at nine, is it nine a.m. I believe? Nothing else coming before council? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wirebaugh, to adjourn at eight twenty-two p.m. for adjournment.